Okay. I'm going to have a roll call to open the meeting. Mrs. Petrie.
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky. Mrs. Oshie. Mr. Cruz.
Yes.
Mrs. Heinie.
Yes.
Mr. Schussler. And Mrs. Woll. Here. Okay, um, I will need a motion to approve the agenda as amended. There were some changes made. Thank you, Angie and Beth. Any questions or discussion about the agenda? Okay, all in favor of approving today's agenda, raise your hand. Motion carries. Okay, before we get into new business, we'll listen to an overview that Dr. Isaacson is going to share with us today.
All right.
He's been a busy guy.
Well, there's been a lot of busy people, but um, I wanted to, I didn't put superintendent report on there, I probably should have. But want to give everyone kind of an update um, as to where we are and why we are calling an emergency board meeting. Is we'll also send this out to the public, so that's why I want to give them, you know, why are we having a board meeting at seven o'clock in the morning for transparency's sake. Um, the reason for the board meeting today is to um, get some official backing of the Board of Education of some things that we are going to be working through and addressing as a result of our closure and kind of what we have going on with this unprecedented uh, things that we have going on in the world today. So, when it comes to responding, so much of it is minute by minute. And so, some of the things that we're going to talk about in here and authorizations are not only clear, a free hand to just do, but in some ways it is. But also communicating with the board that a community resource is needed. Or in trying to address to the multitude of gray areas that we're going to have today with staff and questions that we're going to have with staff. And trying to respond to their needs. Uh, we have hourly staff that are very afraid that they're not going to be able to pay their bills. Um, and trying to balance that with, we want to make sure that they get paid. But we have a responsibility to the taxpayers because we're, at some point, we're going to get questions as to, you're paying people, but what were they doing with taxpayer dollars? And we want to use our resources, but also put some layers of accountability on our part and be able to work with our staff and give them some clear and honest direction and ask them to work with us. Um, I'm sure we'll have some challenges with that throughout, but um, today is going to be one of the more, this is one of the days that all the administrators in the room that will remember in education in our careers. It's going to be a challenging day, but we'll also look back. It's probably going to be the most rewarding day that we've had in a long time of seeing people come together, and I'm excited for that. Um, so how did we get here today? That's kind of what I hope to accomplish today uh, and in the next few weeks. Um, to bring you kind of a quick overview is, a week ago last Thursday, not last Thursday, but the week prior, this is how fast this has moved, is we had a meeting in St. Louis up at Lindbergh, and there was um, medical professionals, BJC, the Directors of Emergency Management for the St. Louis area, St. Louis Public Health, and all this, I want to say all, but most of the superintendents in the St. Louis area. At that time, it was kind of like, hey, this is going to be coming. Is just wash your hands, and that would be our guidance. Wash your hands, protect yourself. And so, that's where there hasn't even the communication out with staff, wasn't the alarm bells, was we're going to prepare, we're going to get the extra hand washing stuff, um, but rely on public health to let us know. Um, last Thursday, quite frankly, I was watching TV and see the DMBA is closing down, March Madness. And then, ever since then, literally every 24 hours is a complete shift uh, in the direction that we've been given. And you've probably paid attention to that, to where St. Louis went from nothing to no groups of a thousand, we're down to 50 uh, in the St. Louis area. Um, so we began preparations in earnest. Uh, the Hillsborough District is in a position unlike all other districts that I'm aware of, with the exception of Fort Zumwalt. Um, we had a meeting last Friday. The days are all right. Up at Edplus, uh, it was Friday. Uh, went up to Edplus for the St. Louis Region Superintendent's desk. Hey, what do you guys think? Um, and districts are in different places. Most of the districts in St. Louis are on spring break this week. I asked the question, who's on spring break right now? And it was us and Fort Zumwalt. That changes a lot of things for us. There has been no, to our knowledge, and it may have changed this morning, community spread transmission of this. So that's a huge uh, discussion that we've had. In our case, my fear was the travel spread. I believe even right now, unless it's changed last night, we have employees who are out in the middle of the Gulf of Mexico circling on a cruise ship. Uh, we have people that have returned from cruises. We have people that have traveled even within the United States. Is there, it's in all likelihood, they don't have anything. I mean, in all likelihood, they don't. Um, but they have a concern for themselves, they have a concern for their well-being. And so, as we were talking, that's been a concern that's been on my mind this entire time. Uh, quite frankly, is, we had a meeting yesterday going into that meeting. I was 98%, and I communicated this, as having PD days to buy time. Because I had thought that the governor may shut us down because that's been left to local control. But I knew that we needed time as fast as these things were changing. Because the last thing I wanted to do was to bring all of our staff and students in today for one day, that we all see each other, talk to each other, spread germs, and then send everybody back out to their homes. Is if we're going to shut down, let's shut down. Uh, and knowing that that was, feeling like that was probably where we would end up. And my take was, if we are going to close at any time soon, Hillsborough should not come back. What do we need to do to make that happen? Um, so yesterday, I was supposed to have a meeting of a phone call with the Health Department because we'd also met with the Health Department last Friday um, at two o'clock, and I had a visit with a superintendent about that. That phone call and resulted in a meeting in this room with, I don't know, 20, 20 some odd people. The County Executive was here, Dennis Gannon, the Jefferson Health Department, representatives of Mercy Hospital, uh, Jefferson County Emergency Management was uh, here as well as representatives from every parochial school, uh, Good Shepherd, and in the county, up here to talk about what we are going to do. In the midst of that meeting, the St. Louis, excuse me, the Eastern Regional Health Directors, and you saw that on TV, made the recommendation to close all schools on March 18th, starting that day, so Tuesday at five o'clock. So that was going to be coming out, which obviously then that changes um, our discussion. And so, at that time that we started working on the letters that would uh, go out and working collectively on that. Um, I apologize for the, some of the communication last night. That second letter that we were going to be closing from the 18th on was supposed to go out at eight o'clock from all the schools in the St. Louis region, but somebody jumped the gun. And then it's like, do we let it fly? You ought to see the text, it's unbelievable. So then it was, we had sent the one for, hey, because we're in a different situation. We were announcing, that was our first announcement, is PD day for us today and tomorrow. Knowing full well that we weren't coming back and we would send that information to the district later on. So I think everybody's got the message and we're good. Um, thank you to Melissa for coming up yesterday and everyone that came up and uh, commun- communicated. We had sent out emails, and they've been working on spreadsheets for jobs for our classified, our teachers, and getting things organized. Doug Weller came up on a Sunday, helped me record the voicemail uh, and sending that out. So many people have already worked so hard on making this all go. And um, I have no doubt that that'll be today. I do have hopes, this is, in a lot of ways, in a month, the uncertainty is that we're going to get some new educational things out of this that may drive the structure for the next 10 years, in all honesty. It forces you to go to some of that online stuff and using a testing platform or a quizzing platform or an assignment giving platform that I've never been used or been afraid to use. And also build relationships, personal relationships with teachers. Not that I don't connect with kids, it's, when you're calling kids individually and it's just you and them on the phone, that's a personal connection rather than even having them in class. Some of those things are going to occur uh, the next few weeks um, with this. This decision was made not out of fear, that's one of the things too. This is a highly politicized issue as well. But I can tell you from our perspective was we're acknowledging the fear, because there are people that have a fear, but we're also understand that there's a lot to this. This was made out of abundance of caution. There are only five cases in the state of Missouri. I expect that to grow. But I, this is out of an abundance of caution. Um, and it, there was a superintendent in Colorado, and some of you guys have probably seen it, and it was an amazing quote. It was like, we may be overacting right now. We may be causing a lot of distress on our families who are at home and not able to, it's a huge issue of childcare. And all of a sudden, we may be overacting. If nothing happens, that's the point, in a sense. But I'll never know, we'll never know if what we're doing here, what the true impact was. But if we don't do something, we will most definitely know what the impact is in Hillsborough. We had had school today, and two or three people get sick, we definitely know what that impact is. And it's hard on that. So, uncharted territories for sure, learning experiences that we hope we never have to use again. Um, but we'll get some things in place over the next few days and meet our community needs um, and come together. So that's kind of a meandering overview of why we're here today.
Any questions before we move into new business? Okay, first item then, in new business, is um, to approve the Hillsborough R3 Pandemic Response Plan. So I need a motion, thank you Beth. Second, Jane. Any questions about the response plan? We were given this a few days ago.
Yeah.
I know. And it will probably change you know, by the minute.
Some of this, kind of this plan is um, one, setting the stage for if we're going to cancel school, but that is canceled now. Uh, but it does give on paper a hierarchy of responsibilities so that we can keep everything as controlled as we can, messaging, etc., how we're going to respond um, to different items, um, to have a plan in place, so.
And this will definitely be helpful for the future.
Yes.
Any other segments or questions? Can you get it very quickly? Okay, then let's move to a vote. All in favor of approving this pandemic response plan? Raise your hand. All right, motion carries. The next item has to do with out-of-state trips for students and, is one for staff, too.
Yeah.
Okay. So this one, um, we need a motion then to approve the cancellation of out-of-state student-sponsored trips and in-state field trips until further notice. Thank you Beth and Angie. Any questions about that? Has certain restrictions and such. Okay, all in favor of approving these trip cancellations? Motion carries. The next um, item has to do with facility usage. So we need a motion to approve the cancellation of facility usage by outside groups until further notice. Thank you Beth and Angie. And they will, these groups will be notified or have them? Oh, look, whatever. Okay, perfect. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote to approve this motion of canceling facility usage. All in favor? Sorry. Motion carries. Is this the?
No.
Oh, it's not. Um, next item is to approve um, the district administration to develop a COV ID-19 Human Resources Protocols and Procedures and authorize payment of staff procedures for both certified and classified staff during any closure through April 21st, 2020, if necessary. Have a different date.
It should be 2020.
Okay, just, and April 21st is the correct date?
Well, the reason I put the April 21st.
Because in case it's extended.
Yes, and that's, that's, that'll be a board meeting after there, and.
Gives you some guess.
I explained, so we had some of our protocols typed out for and it changed yesterday, because now we know that we're going to be out. Basically, here's the gist of this. We want to be able to pay our classified staff and make sure that their health insurance, etc., is those obligations are met for them as employees. This is going to get hairy too, with people that have spouses and their kids. The district's not necessarily responsible for that. It's trying to make sure that they're, have the ability to earn income for that. Is working through uh, procedures and protocols. A big thing is for our hourly staff, how do we make sure that they get paid? Right now, offhand is helping us work with kids. Some of that may be coming in, like the secretaries to make copies and provide the ability to work, where on a snow day, they don't come in. But right now, this is different from a snow day. But that could change if all of a sudden, this afternoon, they're like, nobody can leave their house. Is we're working with Mr. Moore to have things in place, I use Central Office as an example, to where Central Office has, we can still function. Payroll can get made from Kim Utah's house. Megan Buck is able to communicate, and we have our computers and everything is set up so we can conduct district business. But that's a different, we've never, schools aren't typically work-from-home businesses. We're here businesses. Um, some of that may be where we require custodians to come in versus some classified don't. How do we do, like with bus drivers? They may be driving bus routes to deliver meals. Okay, but that looks different is, but they may also come up to help us clean. Is the goal, as we put this together, will, a bus driver's going to make what they make. Even if that day they're doing custodial duties. A food service is going to make what they make um, in doing those things. And when we get down to the leave, that's what is, if somebody chooses, hey, I'm not going to work, I'm not going to be available to be a district resource, then they will have to use a leave day. Because this time is trying to, it's not paid time off. So it's different than a snow day. For our teachers and everyone, is there's, we're going to have to put some things in place to where a teacher, I don't want to call it accountability because it sounds like they're not going to do what they're going to do, is, we're going to have to report for funding purposes and information gathering, what money we spent. Kelly's got to create a bunch of different codes. And so, I'm probably, we will develop something like, where a teacher has to, it'll be a Google form, John Isaacson, I'm clicking, I'm clocking in. Right, that's just documenting that they clocked in, maybe drank a cup of coffee. But that creates, and make phone calls, but that creates that documentation that they work today from a taxpayer transparency, etc. And we have a record for emergency management dollars later on. There's a process to this that I need to explain to all of our staff, but it's putting those protocols in. So I'm asking for some, it's kind of a broad stroke. Uh, and we'll communicate constantly uh, what we are doing. But it's basically, the board here, the major gist of this is um, authorizing the district to get creative to make sure that all of our staff gets paid. That is willing to work so that we don't have people having long-term financial hardship.
And you're still developing those procedures.
Is, they were developed until they.
Changed.
They're changing, you know what I mean? But it's going to change and, you know, we had about a lot of this was, I had sent this out to employees who were frequently asked questions. It's up on the board behind you. But that was if they were quarantined and we're having school, and now that could change, because we could have an employee working from home, a teacher that's working from home doing lessons, but all of a sudden, they get it. And they're quarantined. I don't, they need to take care of their health. So that, then that's a curve ball. Is I don't, they do need to use potentially a leave day if they're quarantined. Uh, those type of situations that are going to be individual in nature, etc. So it's just some flexibility. Does that make sense?
I'm just glad to hear that we are being creative and especially allowing our hourly staff to have opportunities to still work. That was a big concern last night, when we spoke about health. Were they not going to get paycheck for a month?
We want to make it happen, I just, the thing today is trying to work with them, because we are going to have some potential imbalance. They get to work from home to do different things. Make, I had to go in, and so trying to work through some of that imbalance. If we require someone to come in, maybe get it created with comp time or something like that, because it's just, we want to, but we're going to need them to work with us. Because we're trying to help, help the staff.
Okay, so the motion has to do with creating the protocols and procedures and giving the right to pay staff um, through April 21st, 2020.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jason and Beth, so. Any other thoughts? Okay, let's vote then, all in favor of approving this motion. Okay, motion carries then, very good. Hopefully that will alleviate some fears. All right, next item is the authorization for the superintendent to utilize district resources as needed to assist with community response to this coronavirus. Thank you Beth and Jane. So I know you've been really involved with a lot of things that are happening within the county and within the city, so if there's anything to share.
What this is, it's kind of, in short term, an emergency authorization. Is, we are now switching um, in a sense to we're a community resource, and we have to think of ourselves as that. As we met last Friday, administration came up to Central Office. I know that Kim Jackson's been working tirelessly to reorder foodstuffs to, kind of changing to box lunches, etc., etc. Preparation to be able to feed kids when we're out. Um, in addition to that, is looking at and getting um, information as far as what is our supply of non-perishable food items? Because we may get to a period of time where Jefferson County or the Fire Department, those firefighters may be quarantined and they can't leave, but we don't know if supply changes. Some of that stuff goes down, uh, that we're able to be a community resource. Again, um, the district should be reimbursed for anything that goes out with the emergency plan. We have to have those codes, etc. Now, our, that reimbursement may not be next week, but working through some of those items. Um, I asked Ray, this was kind of in response to the toilet paper run, was to get, if we were going to have school, everyone's coming back is, not that people would steal our toilet paper, but it was like, we need to is, bring that, those supplies, the rubber gloves that the custodians were used for cleaning. Is, if we're not in school now, those gloves need to be stored. Because again, ambulance workers and Fire Department, they're going to be totally exposed in going through that. And we've went, there hasn't been the preparation. There's a limited supply of those type of items that we need to supply to our medical staff, etc., to keep them safe. So any of our potential nursing supplies and all those things. And so this is just asking for authorization in working with our county, working with our emergency responders, potentially working with our food pantry. If there is a need that us as a school district respond to that as a community resource, even if it's space, if we can work through, hey, we need, we use a classroom for firefighters to sleep in for a break, it's a clean space, it's close, etc., that we can transition to that, and then I have the ability to not have to have a board meeting to do a facility usage agreement to do those things. I assure you that this, any type of, if I get asked, you all will know immediately and be that transparent. This isn't a broad stroke of, the superintendent has all kinds of powers. It's not that, it's just, these type of things change so often that decisions have to be made. And I need the authority to make those and work with in the best interest of all of you.
Can I make a suggestion? Um, at the hospitals, every, I mean, when you say people are just hopefully not going to steal toilet paper, it's everything is getting stolen. So, my suggestion would be that you guys, since we're going to have time, you do a count of all paper products, canned food, because I'm sorry that some people will, employees will, I mean, people are boarding everything. So if you have a count, and then you actually have to possibly think about putting it in a locked room. Because I mean, that's what we're having to do.
Yeah.
So.
That's what's, they're developing, I think, we have a central repository. Who was on, now the foodstuffs are going to be locked in each of the kitchens, but um, yeah, is, we're just getting into this, if they.
I mean, if you have a count.
Yeah.
And then somebody has to look, because that's the only way to know. It's not, I'm sorry, but it could be inside
Yeah.
their own home. I believe I have to say that.
I'd lock up the toilet paper.
We sold a lawnmower yesterday for a pack.
Okay.
It jumped though. It was a joke.
Okay, any other thoughts? So this motion is to authorize the superintendent to utilize district resources as needed to assist with the community response. All in favor? Very good. Okay, the last item is in regard to clarification of leave days when students are not in school for the. when students are not in school for the virus.
And this, yeah, this is what I added this morning. So if there's a spilling error, it started at 6:45. The last night I was, like, couldn't fall asleep and I thought about it. Is, and just to get some clarification on a couple of items, is if we have employees who are out, like on maternity. And like on a snow day, we typically don't count that against them because the day would need to be made up. If we need to make these days up, then I'll, we'll go back and reevaluate that if teachers end up teaching that, et cetera. Because right now, I don't know that we would, is, I know that, like, I'm going to use exactly, Mrs. Isnerman is teaching art and the staff member is out on a maternity. These are still maternity days for the purpose of that because school is still, in a sense, in session. It's not necessarily, just the kids aren't here. It's a different type of closed, if that makes any sense. Because for our staff, this isn't a day off or next Thursday isn't technically a day off. Is, so those type of things would still continue. But on the, so that was the big thing there. Like, hey, I've found my days, it's like, we're just working from home days. So if you can't work, you need to use a day. To that end, and this was in my mind, more of a classified, but it's for all staff, is from today, well, we'll say from Wednesday, I don't know if I put a date, but basically, I'll start today, is days starting from today until tentatively April 6th, or but whenever we come back to school. And I didn't write this the right way, probably. Is the stipend days. Employees will be able to use leave days that they accrued prior. Because right now, we're going last in, first out, right? To use the leave day stipends. Is during this, we're literally going to flip it. Is last in, last out. So that John Isaacson can use one of my accrued days from last year or three years ago, a sick day. Because what I don't want is an employee, maybe a classified employer or a teacher is like, I don't want to work or I can't work. Or they're sick and forcing it because they're afraid to lose a hundred dollars in July. The purpose of the stipend was to promote attendance to benefit our kids. Is basically, for this period of time, it's flipping to where if you have accrued leave days, your stipend still stays there. That's, now, if I was just hired this year, I'm into my, I'm into my leave days anyhow. It's just, or if I was hired last year and I used seven days, I only have three, but I want to take 10, I'm using three of my accrued days and then getting in this year. So it's just changing it to, the days that were, you have accrued, will be the last ones that go during the days that we are closed for the closure. Clear as mud?
You're going to leave your sleep. Okay. Any questions? All right, so the motion is to...
Well, it's provide clarification regarding leave days.
Okay, so to approve the clarification of leave days for the virus days. All in favor? All right, very good. We didn't have one? Oh.
I moved.
Sorry, I thought we, that's why I asked if we had a motion on the floor. Okay, so we'll have to backtrack. So I need a motion to approve the clarification of leave days during this, okay, during this time. So Beth and then Jane. Okay, all in favor of approving the clarification? Thank you. Okay, anything else? Covered it all?
She said for an hour, we can add something, I'm sure.
I'm sure if I gave you the floor, you'd come up with things. All right, well, we wish you all the best and stay safe and healthy and we thank you for all of your efforts and...
What is to come?
Keep, keep the masses calm. Calm, that's right.
That's good.
Have fun today. Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn today's meeting. Thank you Beth and Jane. All in favor of adjourned? Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing, guys. Thank you so much. I know it's a lot of extra, extra.
Just letting you know.
But your job is extremely important.
It will change.
Yeah.